Are we ready? Okay, we'll move into finance. Thank you, Chairman. Madam Clerk, nine twenty-five dash nineteen, if you're reading the record, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash nineteen, a resolution to allocate the use of proceeds from the 2024 A bond issue of up to $500,000 for various community recreation projects.
Okay. See, this is the application and the grants for the cities for the parks, is that correct? Lee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good deal. Seeing no lights? So we have the town manager from Signal here with us? There you are. Good deal. They're awarded in this one.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to address you and, and thank you for consideration of our grant application. We do have a great opportunity with Town of Signal Mountain to support a, um, a, uh, accessible playground, uh, at Alt House Park, along with a couple of other, um, uh, opportunities to benefit our, uh, our town. Most of this grant would be going into ADA accessible, uh, items like restrooms, uh, walkways, parking, um, ramps. We've got a great, um, privately funded playground project that's going on. They're doing fundraising right now. So if you haven't, uh, heard about the Dahlia Playground, please, uh, do a little bit of research, uh, consider, uh, you know, reading up on it, maybe supporting it. But thank you, uh, for consideration and, uh, I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, get your name and address for the record. Sorry.
Matthew Justice. I'm the town manager of Signal Mountain. I'm a resident of Green Hill, Georgia.
Okay, good deal. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, Matt, thanks for being here. This is a project's kind of very near and dear to my heart. Dahlia's mom has taken it on, uh, as a, as to get these parks, uh, her, has, she has a special needs daughter and, uh, to get it upgraded for all the children of Signal Mountain. Matt, I appreciate you and the town council bringing this forward. Um, it's, it's an exciting opportunity. It's kind of similar to what we did with Sabrina out in, uh, where was that? Was it Ottawa? Absinthe, Absinthe. Uh, not, not as much, not as expensive, but, uh, but very needed. It's just going to be a great project. So Matt, um, please express my thanks and I think our thanks, uh, to the town council and to yourself for bringing this forward and, and to the mayor's office for making this an opportunity, uh, for all of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Graham?
I just want to let Commissioner Baker and, and the gentleman from Signal Mountain know that I will be supporting this. We, uh, we, this is the second round and the first round, Town of Lookout Mountain got this same grant and it is very, very, uh, needed, but it's also very impressive how they're stretching it out and making it work. So I hope Signal Mountain has the same success that Lookout Mountain does with it as well. So I will be supporting this.
All right, seeing no more lights. Matt Folds, great job in how you've assembled this. Madam Clerk, nine, we'll take this up next week, nine twenty-five dash twenty, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty, a resolution accepting the bids of Reynolds Fence and Guardrail Inc. and Roadway Solutions LLC for one-year contract unit pricing with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms, beginning October 1st, 2025, through September 30th, 2026, for guardrail services for the highway department and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Todd, anything to add, just normal expenditure?
Correct, just unit price contracts for, with, uh, two firms. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. We'll take this up next week. No lights, no one standing. Uh, nine twenty-five dash twenty-one, Madam Clerk.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-one, a resolution accepting the proposal from Asphalt Zipper Incorporated for the purchase and delivery of a 2024 reclamer stabilizer machine amounting to $324,460 for the Hamilton County Highway Department and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Hey, Todd, anything to add?
We are utilizing bond fund, but this is a piece of equipment that will improve our efficiency with the highway department. Uh, we have, we have in the past not had this type of equipment. We have rented one or borrowed one, but this will, uh, uh, allow for, for more efficiency in our highway department.
Yeah, Brandon was telling me about it earlier, so I mean, it's, it's great. So Brandon, thank you for, uh, looking at efficiency and cost savings for us as a county. So thank you. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, no lights. Take it up next week, nine twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-two, a resolution to apply and accept an asset management plan grant from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation Resource Protection in an amount not to exceed $300,000, requiring a match of 20% of the total ask and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Todd, anything to add on this?
Yeah, and I'll let, I'll let Nathan, Mr. Janeway, uh, discuss this.
Okay, Nate?
Nathan Janeway, Director of Development Services. Uh, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we, uh, have been, uh, working through a process to, uh, map our stormwater conveyance system. Obviously, we have had some issues with that, um, recently. And part of our requirements for the stormwater department is to understand, um, basically how our stormwater is conveyed through the county. And so this is a way for us to help pay for some of that work, uh, at less cost to Hamilton County.
Okay, good deal. Thank you for the savings there. Seeing no lights, we'll take this up next week, nine twenty-five twenty-three.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-three, a resolution accepting the proposal from SLE Equipment for the purchase of a customized enclosed hazmat trailer amounting to $62,608 for the Office of Emergency Management and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Chief?
Yes, sir. This is Homeland Security with no match. Uh, it was a 2024 Homeland Security grant goes through '27. So this will go, our portable lab will go in it and it'll go anywhere if needed in the country.
Okay, good deal. Seeing no lights, we'll take it up next week, nine twenty-five twenty-four, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-four, a resolution to waive the procurement rules and authorize the county mayor to release two co-titled vehicles with Hamilton County and the Hamilton County Special Tactics and Rescue Services.
Anything to add, Chief?
No, sir.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Well, no lights, so we'll take this up next week. Uh, nine twenty-five twenty-five, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, the Health and Social Services Division, operating as the Hamilton County Health Department, to sign a non-binding memorandum of understanding between the Chattanooga Housing Authority and the Hamilton County Health Department to support residents of the West Side in connection with the One West Side Choice Neighborhoods Implamation Grant for the period of September 17th, 2025, through July 15th, 2032, in the amount of $270,556.
Becca?
Yes, sir.
Anything you want to add?
No, sir.
Okay, good deal. Seeing no lights. Thank you for what you did.
Yes, sir.
No lights, we'll take this up next week, nine twenty-five twenty-six.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-six, a resolution to authorize the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, to execute a contract amendment between the Hamilton County Health and Social Services Division and the Tennessee Department of Health for the rate prevention and education program in the amount of $179,900 and to increase the expenditures and revenues in the amount of $35,900 for the period of February 1st, 2025, through January 31st, 2027.
Okay. Seeing no lights, Ms. Bohannon, anything you want to add?
No, sir.
Okay. We will take this up next week, nine twenty-five twenty-seven.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, the Health and Social Services Division, operating as the Hamilton County Health Department, to accept an amended contract with the Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of WIC services for the time period October 1st, 2024, to September 30th, 2027, in the amount of $6,769,462 and to decrease the revenues and expenditures for fiscal year '26 by $84,319.
Okay. Ms. Bohannon?
No, sir. Unless there are questions regarding the decrease.
Looks like it's self-explanatory.
Thank you.
So thank you. Seeing no lights, I just want to brag on Ms. Becca. She's, uh, about five, six weeks ago, she had her health fair for back to school and I don't think, I mean, you're talking about somebody working. Sweat was pouring off of her and, and I finally convinced her by acting like I wanted to tour to get inside so she could cool off. But great job in your new role and I tell you what, you definitely see an impact, so thank you.
Thank you. I only work as hard as all of those employees. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Take that up next week, nine twenty-five twenty-eight.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution to apply and accept a brownfield redevelopment area grant in amount of $400,000 with no match required to amend the 2026 Parks and Recreation Revenue and Expenditures Budget and to sign any documents related to this resolution.
Okay. Seeing no lights, no comments. Let me see, Becca here, or Alexa here. Sorry, Becca. You had the last three. Anything you want to add, Matt? Okay. All right, good deal. All right, thank you, Matt. Take it up next week, nine twenty-five twenty-nine.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution to appropriate the balance of $27,500 from the 2022 National Center for State Courts Eviction Diversion Initiative Grant from the Hamilton County General Sessions Grant to Court Indigent Mediation Services at the Chattanooga Bar Association in order to immediately expand medication offerings from eviction court cases to qualifying cases across general sessions, chancery, and circuit courts to transition a successful pilot program from the county courts to an outside nonprofit agency.
Okay. Sean, you brought some superstars with you. Okay. Okay.
Good morning, everyone. Alex Van Vey, Circuit Court Judge, 625 Georgia Avenue. Uh, I'm just here briefly to brag on a couple folks. She had mentioned transferring a, uh, this grant to an outside agency and I think you mentioned medication. It was mediation, so we're not providing any medications in the courts. It was mediation services and so I just wanted to make that clear. But, uh, I have had the honor and privilege of working with some pretty amazing folks over the last three years, uh, assisting Hamilton County residents who have, um, you know, very, very little lot knowledge about how the court system works, particularly in General Sessions Court, whereas a high-volume court. And so we have been able to offer some services through a, a pretty unique partnership between the city, the county, uh, and local attorneys, uh, to assist litigants to more easily navigate the court system and possibly leave the courthouse with an agreement that everyone can live on so that justice, uh, in their eyes is done rather than having a judge decide one way or the other. And that's what mediation is. Uh, and so I, I want to, though, use my time and I'll let Sean hammer out some of the details, but I've, I've come to you in the past talking about this grant. You allowed us to, to, to write it and, uh, with the partnership with the city, uh, we have, uh, employed some pretty awesome folks and I wanted to mention one here today. He's sitting in the back. Preet, would you please just stand, uh, and recognize, this is Preet Grewal. He has been Hamilton County's housing stability facilitator for over two years now. Preet ensures that both landlords and tenants understand what is going on in the court system and he actually pairs them and works closely with volunteer mediators. Preet himself is a mediator, an attorney that came to us by way of Kentucky and, uh, he will conclude his service with the county, uh, later this month. And I just wanted you guys to understand how hard he has worked for every resident and for the courts and for us to recognize and give him a round of applause today. And so thank you, Preet.
Good morning, Sean Johnson, Hamilton County Court Chief Administrator Officer, 4123 Briar Street. I can give y'all some history on this if you like, or I can just answer a question. I know y'all got a lot of things on the agenda. Y'all just tell me how you want me to handle it.
Well, I've got no lights, so no questions, so. So that's it. Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you for, for coming. Since there's no, uh, no questions, I'll leave it to you for next week. Okay? Thank you, Sean. And we're honored to bring you to bring your superstars today. Okay. Nine twenty-five twenty-nine, we'll take up next week, nine twenty-five thirty.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution to appropriate up to $135,395.83 of hotel motel funds towards enhanced law enforcement efforts in the Chattanooga downtown area and to amend the fiscal year 2026 general fund revenue and expenditures budgets for the sheriff and the fiscal year 2026 hotel motel expenditures budget accordingly.
Sheriff?
Good morning. This is simply asking that the, um, remaining balance in what was allocated in 2023 for downtown law enforcement by my office, uh, be added to this budget. Basically, it didn't get rolled over at budget time, so we're just asking for the remaining budget to be rolled over for our use in downtown efforts assisting Chattanooga as, uh, myself and the chief of police thing necessary.
Okay, so this is the remaining balance?
Yeah, so to date, we've worked a little over a thousand hours of overtime, uh, since that was created. The original balance was $180,000. We've expended a little over 47,000 and then we're asking for, I believe it's, uh, the, uh, the remaining balance is 132. I believe what it is, 132, 102.
Okay.
To be rolled over for our use.
All right, Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I turned my light off and then back on again. I thought that my question was really answered, but, but, um, and it kind of was. But my question is for finance. Can I ask that?
Sure.
Um, Lee, it, does this, I think this is a great use of this money. I absolutely, Sheriff, thank you for bringing it. I think it's a great use of this money, but, but does this transfer qualify under the rules and regulations of the hotel motel tax?
Yes, it, this, or these expenditures will be qualified as, uh, tourism-related or sufficient to be spent from hotel motel funds.
Great use. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll add one, one thing. So typically, when you hear this, you think it's crime-related. This is also allows us to, um, to be able to assist Chattanooga in events like Iron Mount, uh, other events that happen in the downtown area, uh, that require overtime by my office. So it allows us to be able to assist them as needed and, uh, that's a decision I make in collaboration with the chief of police.
Okay. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, Sheriff, again, um, thank you for doing this. Um, was it 2023 that we initiated this?
I believe it was.
Okay, and, and these funds are already out there. It's not like we're garnering new funds, we just got to get them transferred.
They are. It was originally allocated and I believe last year we rolled over. This year, I think we failed to get that done. I believe Lee can probably elaborate on that a little bit, uh, more. I don't think the money went back over into the general fund.
Okay. And, and do you see this, how, how long do you see this continuing in perpetuity or?
I would like to see it continue. Like I said, you know, we're all operating on limited budgets. Uh, it allows me to, uh, have the overtime flexibility to put deputies in the downtown area when they're needed.
Yeah.
For things, spikes where we have tourists, uh, visiting our city and our county for Ironman, uh, other various events. We see hotels being built. I believe we had a grand opening yesterday for one downtown. And, uh, with tourism and with visitors coming in, uh, for whatever their, their, their purpose is, um, that continuing depends on how safe our city and county is. I think when you see that, that, uh, black and white Chattanooga police car and you see that star car, sheriff's car, I think you feel safe and I think it's a very important factor in maintaining that, uh, that, uh, visibility we have as a, as a city and county across the US.
Well, I had the pleasure of watching you coordinate between the city and the county in my past life and I know you do it well and I appreciate the way, you know, the Chattanooga Police and Hamilton County Sheriff Department works together. So thank you for being a lead in that.
Thank you.
It'll be a sheriff's office. Sheriff's office, not department.
Oh, did I?
No. I think you said police department, Sheriff.
Yeah. I said sheriff's office. Yeah. I, I'm almost there, Sheriff.
Okay, seeing no more lights. Getting hit up here. Uh, we'll take this up next week, nine twenty-five dash thirty-one, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash thirty-one, a resolution authorizing the sheriff's office to apply and accept a grant from the Tennessee Corrections Institute.
Sheriff?
It's a no-match grant, um, that, uh, we would come back in front of the commission if it's awarded. I would expect us to be awarded that grant. Uh, those funds go toward training equipment, whether that's less lethal devices, mats, things that our seven-week Corrections Academy utilizes, uh, on a daily basis.
Okay, seeing no light, so thank you to the hardest-working sheriff of Hamilton County.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
See you.
Take it up next week, nine twenty-five dash thirty-two.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash thirty-two, a resolution approving the proposal from Flex Financial, a division of Stryker Sales LLC, for a lease agreement to provide replacement cardiac monitors and automatic external defibrillators to include associated preventative maintenance, repair, and battery service plans for Hamilton County Emergency Medical Services and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts, any documents necessary to implement this resolution.
Okay, Ms. Cooper?
Just wanted to note, um, that this lease agreement is going to be effective for the following fiscal year. It's not going to affect this year's budget. We're signing this, uh, agreement early, uh, so that we can lock in lower pricing. Doing so is going to be saving us an entire year's, um, worth of the lease agreement, so over $300,000 and wanted to, uh, thank the procurement team for their assistance and patience with the EMS staff as we learn the procurement rules. So thank you so much.
How much is, is it? How much is the lease that's not on the?
Um, I believe that the details are in the full resolution. But it's a five-year lease and so, uh, over the period of the lease, I think we're paying a little over 370, 382, uh, per year, per year. So this locking in these prices now saves us, um, over $390, uh, $390,000. So locking in early is going to save us, um, a good deal of money.
Wow, thank you, Ms. Cooper. Good savings, good savings. It's outstanding. We, we've had a lot good savings on stuff up here, so good job. Ms. Cooper, no lights, so we'll take this up next week. That's all of financial. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Heading over to building.
Thank you, Chairman. Madam Clerk, can you read nine twenty-five dash thirty-three?
Resolution nine twenty-five dash thirty-three, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to enter into and execute a contract with HK Architects for programming services associated with the design of the new Hamilton County Health Department for an amount not to exceed $80,000.
Mr. Lehman?
Uh, yes, sir. You may remember, we went through a, uh, design selection process last year and selected HK Architects relative to the Health Department facility. This is an initial programming contract with them. Uh, Ms. Heidi Heffron is here. Uh, there may be some other questions related to the Health Department, but this, this is kind of a first phase, uh, to, to, two things. Number one, initiate the project and also, uh, for them to provide some expertise on, um, programming, both from a space allocation, uh, uh, a space needs, both consolidating maybe, uh, Health Department as it moves forward with some, uh, design expertise so we can then come back with a full contract, uh, relative to a, to a full-scale, uh, design contract for a facility that we feel comfortable is going to meet our needs in a, in a proper budget.
We're just keeping the train rolling.
Uh, yes, sir.
Fantastic. Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, um, this, 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 uh, firm, Heidis Firm, they've worked with us before. They've turned out a good product, so I'm real comfortable with, with what they're going to do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, thank you. Todd, um, so this, this contract's for programming, correct? I mean, we, right now, with Ms. Bohannon there, um, she's going through all the services and so forth, is this to, to continue that process to make sure that we're within the scope of what we should be providing, that we may have had scope creep in the past, that we kind of get it refocused? And it could be, uh, uh, the renovation of a facility or a new facility, but we don't know until we get the programming correct, correct?
I, I, I would agree. It's to start the process to make sure that we define, of course, service and then what that looks like. And, and currently, we're looking at a new facility, but that's currently the plan. But yes, sir, it's to do, it's to add some architectural and some medical expertise, uh, with our staff or with the Health Department staff to make sure that we get the right, we understand exactly what we need to do relative to a overall project.
Okay, Becca, do you want to weigh in on this? Your thoughts, please?
I've been in these, some of these preliminary conversations. I mean, mostly this is in Todd's house, uh, at the moment, but I've certainly been at the table.
I want you at the head of the table.
Yes, sir. Todd?
No, no, end user is at the head of the table, absolutely.
Yeah.
With, with some expertise, hopefully, that, uh, that HK can bring.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Baker, will the committee that you were on, will y'all work with them going forward in this process?
Very, very gladly. Uh, I, I enjoy very much working with, uh, Ms. Bohannon and, and of course Todd. So yeah, I see our committee, um, being very involved in this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, nine twenty-five, nine twenty-five thirty-four.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash thirty-four, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a quitclaim deed and to sign any necessary documents to convey to the city of Chattanooga, Hamilton County's interest in four parcels jointly owned by Hamilton County and the city of Chattanooga.
We have no lots. That finishes building in economic development.
Okay, uh, go ahead and go into zoning. We've got two items here. However, they are both related to the same address, so Madam Clerk, we're going to bundle nine twenty-five thirty-five and thirty-six, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash thirty-five, a resolution to rezone from R2A Rural Residential District to A1 Agricultural District for the property located at 2423 Cedar Creek Drive. Resolution nine twenty-five dash thirty-six, a resolution granting a special permit for a halfway house or similar use for property located at 2423 Cedar Creek Drive.
Hey, thank you. We'll hear from RPA staff first. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, uh, Brian Schultz, recent planning agency. Uh, this first, excuse me, first request is to rezone from R2A Rural Residential District to A1. Uh, proposed use is a halfway house. We'll talk about that halfway house on the next slide. It's roughly, uh, 0.43 acres in size. The A1 district is the only district in the county and the county zoning regulations that allow, um, drug and alcohol, penal or correctional halfway houses, group, group homes or rehab centers and similar uses. The key word is the similar uses, which basically accepts persons for care and provides room, board, and non-medical living assistance to residents by special permit approved by the county commission. Again, this is the only zone that allows this type of use in the county's A1 zone. The county zoning regulations also describe what a halfway house is. And halfway house is a place where persons are aided and readjusting to society following a period of imprisonment, hospitalization, or institutionalized treatment. It's for prison parolees, disturbed persons, and juveniles. We also have group home defined in zoning regulations, but group home is defined as a home that's held out to the general public as a home which accepts handicapped and/or aged persons. What the applicant is doing, and maybe she can clarify further, is not, it's not really halfway house or a group home. It's more of a transitional home. Our zoning regulations do not really provide a definition of a transitional home. That's why it's grouped back into the A1. It says, "or any other similar use to these uses." So it's not spelled out transitional home, but it is similar to these type uses. These are, I believe, for, uh, kids or adults, 18 to 24, who have aged out of foster home. And so they're transitioning from foster home into permanent living, what this will be. So it's not really a halfway house or a group home. That's why I say it's more of a transitional home. There's been no zoning history for this particular piece of property. It's zoned R2A. Everything around this property is R2, uh, which is a residential subdivision. You can see on the aerial map here, this is a single, existing single-family dwelling. Everything abutting this property is a single-family dwelling, so this is a residential subdivision. Here's a view of the site. Another view of the site. This is north of the site, which is a single-family dwelling. South of the site, again, another single-family dwelling. This is east of the site, single-family dwelling. West of the site, single-family dwelling. And this is Cedar Creek, Cedar Creek Drive. You can see, again, this is primarily a single-family subdivision. This property is in a White Oak Mountain area plan, which was adopted by the planning commission in 2019. Area Plan, which was adopted by the Planning Commission in 2019. The place type recommendation is suburban residential, and that simply means the primary uses are single-family dwellings. Here's a closer view of that place type. You can get and see it's suburban residential, again, which is single-family dwellings. Here's the site plan that was submitted with the request. It's using the existing structure. Staff looked at this and felt the request was not compatible. The adopted land use plan, again, is it recommends single-family. It would not be a compatible adjacent land uses and development form. The A1 District is not appropriate zone to introduce here, which is an established neighborhood. So, it would not be appropriate to introduce A1 into a R2 neighborhood. Approving A1 at this location will set the precedent for future rezoning requests. Just as a reminder, there's approximately 183 acres of A1 zone property in the county today that this business could locate in without needing a rezoning. So, staff recommended to deny this request. There was opposition present at Planning Commission. I believe they're here today. I'll let them speak to that opposition. We did have one person in support at the Planning Commission. Planning Commission heard all the, from the staff and the public, and felt the request would not be compatible at this location. There was a lot of discussion that felt this was a need in the community, just not at this location. So, I felt A1 is not appropriate to introduce here. So, Planning Commission recommended to deny rezoning from R2A to A1. Same area for the special permit, same issues. So, staff and Planning Commission both recommended to deny the special permit. So, both requests come to this body with a recommendation to deny.
Thank you, Brian. I will be hearing from public comments and the applicant, but before I do that, does anybody have any questions for staff? Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. Who's going to run this house?
I think the applicant is better to speak to that than me.
Okay. I mean, is it a for-profit, nonprofit?
It is for-profit, is my understanding.
It's a for-profit.
My understanding. She can probably clarify than I can.
Okay. This is District 7. Commissioner?
That's correct.
Commissioner Hilton, what are your thoughts?
I don't think it's the appropriate location. My concerns, as we did with short-term vacation rentals on septic size, how many people are going to be in the home? We wouldn't allow an STVR, you know, to have a certain occupancy. There were just a few questions like that.
Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Hilton's point, I didn't have it on the slide, but in our staff report, this is sort of similar to STVR, if you think about it, people coming in and out. And so, we looked at that. Could you use this site for an STVR today? You could. And it doesn't meet those requirements either for STVR.
And so, this was taken up also, do the people of this community, are they, are they here?
I think they're here. That's their opposition.
Okay. So, okay, I look forward to hearing from them, because I believe they have the great need to speak on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Hollander?
Thank you, Chairman. Brian, first of all, I want to commend the lady for what she's wanting to do. I think we all realize the need for that. It's just where it is, is the question. Correct me if I'm wrong, did I understand you to say that if, say, she chose to sell this, and a year or two, we already had that A1 zoning, then they could go to a drug or an alcohol rehab house without rezoning?
Correct. What's that special permit issued is for all those similar uses captured under that special permit.
So, are there, did they put other conditions on it?
This body could put conditions on it.
Okay.
But even at that, if you put A1 zoning there, you could have all those uses in the A1 zone in a residential subdivision.
It's a great concept, but just not a good place. Thank you, sir.
See, no other lights. Is the applicant here would like to come down to the microphone and speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nerva Ashay. The address we're talking about is 2423 Cedar Creek Drive, Chattanooga. Yes, good morning. The transition from childhood to adulthood is challenging for any young person. And for youth and foster care, it can be even more difficult if they lack stable connections, supportive family, or friends to guide them. And in many cases, when these young people age out of foster care, they are truly on their own. And each year, hundreds of young people in Tennessee leave the foster care system without stable housing or family support. So, we see that in 2024 only, 854 young people age out of foster care statewide in Tennessee. And for many of those turning 18, that meant facing homelessness. And without access to higher education or vocational opportunity, too often they, the path is homelessness. And Broken Healer Home, we are committed to providing safe, supportive housing for young adults ages 18 to 25, who are aging out of foster care, whether they are receiving extension of foster care or not. At 18, if youth are not enrolled in higher education or able to hold steady employment, they often face very limited housing options. So, too many end up, again, on the street, not because they are criminal, but because they don't have housing. And the type of housing that we are, we want to be able to offer is not just shelter. It is to proactive investment and prevention. By supporting young adult at this critical stage, we can help reduce homelessness, lower the risk of crime, and give these youth the chance to build strong, independent lives. Our mission is clear to equip emerging adults with life skills, employment readiness, and the tool they need for independence, so they can become thriving members of our community. And we all know that on August 11, the Hamilton County Planning Commission denied the special permit and zoning change request for our East Burnet property because the code is allowing transitional home under the halfway home, halfway, halfway home designation. We respect the knowledge, the concern, we respect and acknowledge the concern raised by the neighbors. Our intent has never been to dislodge or divide the community. I have owned the East Burnet home for 20 years, raised my children there, and support many children in that neighborhood. For this reason, Broken Healer Home is officially withdrawing the rezoning request for that location. However, our mission continues. The need is urgent, and our young adult cannot wait. So, we are here today to ask if Broken Healer can work in partnership or get help with the county and the city leaders to find a mutual benefit, a mutual beneficial solution. While this particular location was not approved, the task before us remained the same, to help identify a proper site for the Broken Healer Home, so that together, we can provide young adults in Hamilton County a safe foundation they need to transition successfully into when they are leaving the foster care system. So, thank you for your time and for your commitment to finding a solution for both honoring the community concern and meet the urgent need of some of those vulnerable youth and those young people. We ask you today to stand with us and help us identify a proper home for Broken Healer Home, solicit public sponsorship, so that young people can successfully transition into adulthood. As far as I lie in your power, let everyone stand ready to act, a part helping forward with work. As I close, I leave you with the words of Jesus. "I was a stranger, and you invited me." The command is to us. And by opening our resources and Broken Healer Home, the youth we are aid and is fulfillment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If you don't mind, could you come back to the microphone just for a second? I just want to clarify, just to make sure I heard you correctly. You want to withdraw your case, is that correct?
Yes, for the zoning purpose, yes.
Okay. You want to, you want to withdraw both of them?
Yes, because they together, yes.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure that was what I heard. But since we're already here, if opposition, but before we hear from opposition or comments, or if you're in favor of it, you can still have an option to talk. But if anyone has any questions or comments for her before?
I was, but since she's withdrawing it, I don't, really don't see a reason.
Well, I commend you for your service and your purpose. And I don't really disagree with hardly anything you said, but I hope we can find some common ground somehow and help your cause. Okay? But thank you for coming down here, okay? And if you don't mind, if you just want to have a seat, I'll hear from some of the public comments. Like, if you're here in opposition or in favor of this, we'd still like to hear from you since you took time to come down.
Hello again. Makayla Winter, District 8. Happy to give my address for the record privately. But I just wanted to go on the record in supporting the Broken Healer Home. I had the opportunity to sit down and chat with Ms. Ashay and some of her staff for a little over an hour and really learn what brought them here and what brought them through this process. And I think that this is an opportunity to really embrace doing something good. I think that, you know, if it weren't for some pretty specific zoning designations, this is a foster care home that could be up and running in the very near future and supporting folks who very much so need it. And so, my ask to you all is to just look at this all as an opportunity, rather, I mean, there's the roadblocks with the actual zoning itself. But, and I hope that this is taken the right way, and I mean this in good faith, but you all have really gotten a lot of heat in the past few months around Plan Hamilton for close relationships with the homebuilders associations, real estate agents, people of the like. And I think that the relationships and, you know, money and power, all of that is neutral, but how we use those relationships really matters. So, I think that this could be a great opportunity to use some of those relationships in a really constructive and productive way and work closely with the Broken Healer Home and ensure that they actually have the location that is appropriate. I think the leaders are in full recognition that this may not be like the most appropriate location, but I think that location is out there, and their mission can be furthered to help the young people who really need it. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, while speaking on her, I'm going to reach out to applicant, work with her, and see if we can help. I mean, Planning Commission had a large, huge discussion on this, because it's a need. And our zoning codes are definitely needed, updated to uses like this. And so, we're willing to work with her, see what we can do to help.
That's perfect. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. We're going to hear from the rest of the public. Ma'am, if you come down, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Christina. I'd like to provide my address privately, if that's possible. I live in the community, in the neighborhood. I'm here in opposition to this, but I wanted to say that since she's withdrawing it, that we can see that, you know, as a community, that she has her heart in the best place, and I really commend that. And I appreciate the whole gesture. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Mancuso. I'm also resident of the Shenandoah subdivision, and I can give my address privately. And I just want to thank the applicant, you know, this whole situation obviously is very tense, right? And we, as a neighborhood, we want to make sure that it's known that we were not against the intent and the passion that this applicant has for serving those people who need help, right? Our issue was ultimately about a business wanting to take up root in the middle of a residential area, and also the property's infrastructure, the septic, you know, the traffic and things of that nature. So, we are very thankful of the applicant for her consideration and withdrawing her request, you know, and know that it is never against her intent to help those. That was not what was at issue. What was at issue was a business setting up root in the middle of a residential area. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Name and address, sir?
Excuse me. Mike Murphy, 9305 Mountain Shade Drive. I live in the Mountain Shadows subdivision, which is adjacent to Shenandoah. In fact, my house is back-to-back with a house directly across the street from the house in question. And I also, I'm not heartless. I certainly appreciate what the lady is trying to accomplish, and I think I would support that, except I don't think it's the right location. We have a lot of children in, on my street, as well as in our neighborhood. I just, the point is, to the extent there could be any impact against adversely relative to Shenandoah neighborhood, we would equally have the same impact in Mountain Shadows, which is even a larger neighborhood. And I also point out that it does not seem to be the appropriate location, as pointed out, not only because of the zoning rules, but there's no public transportation in that area. There's not businesses in the area where a person can seek employment for these 18 to 24-year-old individuals. So, thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Sharon Price Coughlin. I live at 2401 Cedar Creek Drive. I just want to say first, thank you. And I would like to tell you, I'm a mother of the children that you're trying to help. And I know that there's a big need. So, I was you 20-something years ago, and I was down in the courts and just trying to help kids, get them off the street. So, like you said, we were not ever against it. And if I can help you in some way, because I'm around, I will. Just let me know. I'll give you my name. And thank you for doing this. I was really getting scared of that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We got one more who'd like to speak? Name and address, sir?
My name is Donald Marks. I live in the Mountain Shadows community, again, like the previous gentleman, 513 Picture Ridge Drive. This is a community where there are many families with young children developing, as well as senior citizens, which I am one. It was residential to begin with when I came here 20 years ago. I'm retired now, I'm a retired physician. Because of the type of development that was being proposed, I had concerns regarding how this would take place. I think the position that this lady proposes is an admirable one. I agree that it should be supported by the county. This is just the wrong location. But there's another concern now. It was going to be run as a, as one of the commissioners stated, as a for-profit business. Has this entered into a situation where it's a can of worms, and other businesses with other possibly admirable or non-admirable motives will try to establish themselves in that community? This is a question that should be examined by this county, okay? And if I was going to think of any type of business that wouldn't be allowed to be established in such a community, I would hope it would be beneficial for the residents of that community. And since you managed, this would, for example, be rezoned as an agricultural permitted property. There are many possible agricultural beneficial types of businesses that could be created there. And Mountain Shadows, we have a community center. That could have been considered as something, that parcel could be developed. It could be used for rehab for pets, possibly even owned in the community, and others could be used for flower shops or other limited agricultural products that could be shared by the community. So, I would hope that this query does not lead to other possibly harmful types of business considerations in this particular community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the comments. Thank you all for your comments. I'm going to ask the applicant, if you might come up just one more time. I've got a request from Commissioner Graham here would like to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm very familiar with the fact that when you take a foster child, that at the age 18, they got nowhere to go. And so, we either help them and get them some kind of solid foundation in their future, or they end up in our prison system. And we don't want that at all. But, and I commend you, ma'am, very much for taking this on. That's a, it's a very, it may be for profit, but it's a very, very difficult job that you've embraced in. And so, you've obviously got a calling to help these young people, and I applaud that. My recommendation to you is, maybe this is the wrong location, and I'm glad that you've withdrawn it. But every year, the city and the county work together on back-tax property. So, I would highly recommend you stay in contact with us and get in contact with the city, and let's find a piece of back-tax property that maybe we can utilize. You know, we do it all the time. We help the city, and the city helps us. We put it into property banks and all kinds of different things to try and help new development or help people get their first-time house or all that type of stuff. So, maybe there's a piece of back-tax property that the city and the county can come together. And more importantly, I know these young people have to get either to school or a job. So, maybe we can find a back-tax piece of property on a bus line or somewhere with better transportation than being out that far. So, if there's anything I can do to help in that nature, I'd be happy to. But please, reach out to our back-tax department and keep us abreast of what you're doing, so maybe we can help you with the city, and then we can find you some kind of a place to make this work. I'd very much like to see this happen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you for your passion for young people who need help. And I spent many, many years with young people who needed help. So, I understand that passion. I'm sorry we just gave away a bunch of... So I understand that passion. I'm sorry, we just gave away a bunch of property to the city, and you could have had some of that, but as Commissioner said already, there are opportunities that will be available in our back-tax season. The other thing is, are there any other agencies like this that you partner with? Do you have another, another outreach like this that you can be a partner to and actually come under the umbrella of, or is this a startup business?
It's a startup business. Some of the agencies that are, I've seen that they are in Nashville, Memphis area. There's one or two that does that, but they mostly do children who are coming, aging out of foster care, receiving the extension of foster care, which mean that they are bound to go to college immediately from transitioning. Not one just to do what I'm trying to do also.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. And once again, I commend you.
Commissioner Shipley, down here, like.
Yeah, I, I commend you for what you're trying to do, but my question's for Brian Schultz. Did I hear you say you're gonna try to do something on zoning that would accommodate this in that neighborhood?
Not, not that specific neighborhood, perhaps, but we're looking, we'll look into our zoning code and probably bring some amendments to this body in the near future. As our zoning code, it's really outdated. There's a lot of things we need to look at. This is one of them. Because you can see those terminologies, it's, it's very old terminology, and we just gotta come up with new things. You'll be seeing some amendments at some point in the future.
I too would be glad to help in any way. I go back to Mr., Commissioner Graham, having something like this downtown on the bus line, place, good. In residential neighborhoods, I don't think so, because it's kind of like Commissioner Hilton said, back to the short-term rental, new people coming in and out every day. You're gonna understand the point of your neighbors. And if we did it here, we set a precedent, all across Hamilton County, to have these popular. I think we gotta be very careful.
Thank you, Commissioner Shipley. I don't see any other lots. Thank you again for coming down here and hope we'll be in touch soon, okay? Have a good day. That's all we have for zoning. That's it. See you next week.